I'd like to call this meeting of the Winter Town Council to order. This is the August 15th, 2023 meeting at 7:02 PM. We're in the Harvey Haring Room. Roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fisillo. Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DeMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flahcutt.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge by Vice President Ruggiero.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from the August 1st meeting have been circulated. If anyone's had the opportunity to take a look at them, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel Munson. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. We have three public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on the Town Hall Municipal Parking Lot. Vice President Ruggiero, if you can give us an update.
Yep, so at our last council meeting, we gave a committee report that explained the TSAC recommendation to the council that would change the restrictions on the four parking spots out here to our left, or my left. It would, in effect, make those spots designated for 30-minute parking during Town Hall and library business hours. The handicap spot would be moved to the back lot over here, so there would be two handicap spots there. And the veterans' spot has already, there's already one at the EB Newton where the new VSO office is, but, you know, there might be a desire to keep an additional veteran's spot here in the back lot. That's an amendment that could be made tonight as well. We had legal opinion given by Attorney Sipoleta that explained that we were authorized to move the handicap spot from this lot to the back lot. And I think that pretty much summarizes the situation. Again, this recommendation came from TSAC, and it was passed out of rules and ordinances two to nothing.
All right. And I am assuming that Mike DeLuise is on the call. Before we open it up to the public for comments, or to the council, Mike, if you have any further explanation?
Can you unmute? Can you hear us, Mike?
Is Mike's mic turned on?
Can you hear us?
There we go.
There we go. Thank you, Mike.
I apologize for, well, let me turn off my camera for some reason. Yeah, what Counsel Ruggiero said summarizes most of it. The main change to this is that it puts a restriction on those spots, so they're just being 30 minutes during Town Hall library business hours. It restricts them to 30-minute parking for Town Hall library business during those hours. So people couldn't park there for other purposes while the buildings are open for business. That's the main change that's going on here, isn't moving the handicap spot. Moving the handicap spot isn't within the council's scope on this. As far as the order of change goes, it's just to let you know that the handicap spot's not going away, it's just being moved.
Okay, thank you. Let's open this up for the public. Anybody in the audience that would like to be heard on this? Positive or negative? Yes?
Mary Anna Gletty. I live across the street. I know you know that's my car outside. I have a handicap placard. I understand where you're coming from, the 30-minute parking. However, having lived here for 60 years, there were signs put up many years ago by Selectman Dick Dines, who put up 30-minute parking that was never, ever enforced. My question is, who's going to be enforcing the 30-minute parking out here? That's number one. And number two, when the Apati Coming School was in the process of being built, before they even broke ground, me and my family, we used to own both buildings across the street, attended those meetings, and we were assured that the parking out here would not be affected by employees of the school department parking on the street all day. That has gone by the wayside. My tenant, who comes home at 12:30 in the afternoon, cannot find a parking space. I mean, I know there's an issue everywhere in the world, but when you see teachers or employees coming in, and they're there all day from 7:30 in the morning till way after school gets out, that's not fair to us across the street. And now you're implementing five spaces in back for other business. My question is, where are we going to park? I don't have a driveway. I don't have a flat roof that I can put a driveway up on my roof. I have nowhere to, I have one car, I got rid of one car, okay? So in my building alone, it's two cars. I'm speaking for my building. The other building, I can't speak for them, because I don't own the building, I don't know what their situation is, the majority of them work all day. I do know there's two people on the first floor that are handicapped also, but they don't have, one, I don't know if they both have a handicap placard or not.
I believe one does.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know what their situation is. I'm just concerned, my whole left leg is a rod, okay? I broke my femur, my knee, and my ankle. I have bad asthma. And honestly, it does help me to know that I have a handicap placard and I can park near my home, okay? Now, and the other, like I said, the other concern is, who's going to police the 30-minute parking? Am I going to be calling the police department and saying, such and such a car has been there for an hour now? What happens? So this is my concern, and the other concern is, why were we notified? I heard about this the night of the fire department meeting. I mean, not all of us go online. I mean, we're the only two buildings there. Don't you think we should have gotten a letter as being a butters regarding the parking situation out here? And school's going to be starting in two weeks. What's going to happen?
Okay, I'll try to address a few of them. I know you asked a lot of questions and totally understand. I know, as far as the enforcement, the enforcement is by the same agency that enforced the police department, which would enforce anything, everything in town. It's not, we don't have a separate Town Hall enforcement agency, so it would be the police. In terms of school parking, I know, my understanding is, there's still a policy also ongoing with restrictions on personnel making, trying to alleviate a lot of the parking from the schools here. I do also know, and just a suggestion on, you are, we're not eliminating handicap spot, but we're moving it further away, basically, from your comfort zone. You are more than welcome, I'm assuming, to apply for a handicap placard on the street, which I can't imagine wouldn't be approved. So that's obviously an option also. I know this has been through TSAC for an awful long time. I know there have been phone calls and emails from citizens in the town just saying that, like you said, it kind of goes along with during, during the school hours or during business hours, there's very few spots around.
Right.
And people are coming in to pay bills, tax, real estate tax, water bills, whatever, and they have no place to park, and then they get frustrated and say, the town doesn't want my money, you know, we need to, which is totally understandable, and it should be, you know, and that, I think, was the thought behind this, the empathy that's behind trying to get this started. But I do know, and I would speak on your behalf if you were to apply for a placard on Herman Street, I know I might not have addressed all your questions. I was trying to take a, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the other things is, having living across the street, and I am retired, I see all that goes on here. And there's never these three spots parked for any lengthy period of time that, you know, there are people going in the Town Hall and coming out. I haven't never seen it during the day where all three spots are taken for any lengthy period of time.
It's not the three spots that's the issue.
Right.
The spots on the street is the issue.
Right.
And the flow of parking out here during the summer, it flows very well.
Right, it's better.
When school is out. And I see people come and do their business 10 minutes, 15 minutes at a time. I get done early with work every day, so I see a lot of it. And I see a lot of the same cars parked out there. That's why it came clear to me what was going on.
And actually, excuse me.
And it's not about these three spots.
Okay, just one at a time. Please state your name.
I'm sorry, Linda Vargas. I live on the first floor in her house. Excuse me, yes. The flow of it during the summer is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the school, September to June.
Yes.
Let's, Ms. Jarvis.
No, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. No.
Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Jack Dunn.
Thank you.
Precinct, thank you.
I thought we were going to be discussing parking here, this building. We're only discussing four spots out here?
That's what the TSAC recommendation, this is a public hearing on TSAC recommendation.
That there might be 20 or 30 parking spaces in the back? I don't know the number, but there's a lot of them. Why aren't we discussing the parking in back of this Town Hall? That parking lot was designated for people that want to visit the Town Hall and the library. All the employees in this building and the library are supposed to park across the street. That was a designated spot. That was the only neighborhood. In the back, I've been told by somebody that's been in this Town Hall for a very long time that the teachers park over here, and people that live on Belcher Street park in this parking lot. There's maybe one or two passing kids that go into this neighborhood over here. So why aren't we addressing the situation behind the building where there's 20 or 30 spots rather than just four spots out front? Thank you.
Okay. And I don't, I disagree with you, and I know there is action going on with that. This was a specific recommendation from several months back for this one area. It did not go into the back as far as the rest of the spots. I know that is being addressed, and some of the items you mentioned are being addressed.
Thank you. Just to respond to that.
Yes.
I've mentioned this parking lot four or five times as a designated parking spot for employees, and I've mentioned parking lot across the street a half a dozen times. And I don't know why my concerns aren't addressed, rather than just these four spots out front. And I empathize with the people that live here. If this parking lot was used as it's supposed to be used, you wouldn't have a problem.
Right, because we were told years ago.
You just have to keep in, I'm sorry, but you just have to, if you want to, yes.
We were told years ago, like I said, living here 60 years, during the day, we can't park back there because of the business that goes on in the Town Hall. And when that parking lot was fixed, after they moved the DPW building, that the employees were supposed to be parking up there. And the parking lot that was made down on Walden Street was the overflow parking for the teachers in the middle, in the Apati Coming School. But they don't follow that protocol. And out here, we're supposed to be just for the tenants across the street, and like I said, they all work during the day, not an issue for them. I don't work, I don't work, so, and she comes home at 12:30 in the afternoon. And as I stated, we got rid of one car for that sole purpose because of the parking, and I don't need two cars. So I was being a little bit considerate there, too. Now, would we be able to park in back, taking away?
Well, you would absolutely be able to park in a handicap spot if.
Yeah.
Yes.
But say she comes home from work, is there going to be a spot that she could park in, in the back if there's nothing out here because the teachers are taking up the spots? Or is that going to be addressed that the teachers can't park out here?
That is going to be addressed.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to misrepresent, that they can't park back there is going to be addressed. I can't say if it's going to be addressed on Herman Street. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it going to be addressed out here, that they can't park here from 7:30 in the morning till, some teachers stay till 5 o'clock? And that, you know, that is a big hindrance to this neighborhood. And we're talking two buildings. That's all we're talking about. And I could count, there's like about eight or nine cars.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Kili and Texara Library Trustee, also a resident at Precinct 6. I'm here for another reason, but as for this, I actually agree and think that it would be lovely to have 30-minute parking. Many times I'm here on library business, and I cannot find a parking space. But I do wish to be heard, the fact that the back parking lot does need to be addressed in some way. We had an event running on a Saturday a couple of months ago, and residents on the other street dragged out basketball nets.
Ooh.
Set them up.
Yes.
And completely blocked, or that we had no parking, no parking for residents from all over, and it was heartbreaking to hear. I don't know how many times where I come, where I want to walk in and do something quick, and I can't find a parking space, so I choose to leave. And I hear this from resident after resident as a library trustee, something needs to be done. Yes, that's wonderful to have these, but it does make it difficult because of the access, which I know we brought up other times about how to get into the library and where are handicap accessible stuff. If you're a handicapped and need to get into the library, you can't go around that way, it's steps. You have to go all the way around and around to the front. And if you're going to the children's room, that means then going to the elevator, taking it all the way down. It's not easy. So the back lot does need to be addressed, but I do appreciate the town taking the opportunity to put some time down to make more spaces available for people trying to do quick stuff. I have come to Town Hall a couple of times to drop something off and just chose not to. But when I joined the library board a couple of years ago, I was told by a past director that employees of the Town Hall and the library were not allowed to park there. But when I was dropping off as of two years ago in the morning for the ATC, because I didn't like to cause traffic, I would park and walk my child across and wait with him. Every time, I'd pull in and I'd watch teachers and people in this building and the library park. So that lot, that lot does need to be addressed. And as I said, the fact that those people were playing basketball, and when even the police were called for it, nothing was done about it. They were just seen as, well, we can use this parking lot for basketball.
I, I agree with her, and I have seen that myself.
Thank you.
Yeah. And they play up on Town Hall, too.
Any comments on Zoom?
We have Mike that wants to speak again.
Mike?
You won.
Yep, thank you, sir. I just want to address a couple of things. Part of the, as part of the recommendation, it isn't included, what went to the council, because again, it wasn't within the order of change. We did make a recommendation to the town manager to request a handicap space be placed on Herman Street, right by the mailbox, so it would be on the street directly before the driveway where these parking spaces are. The issue was the teachers' parking in the lot should be resolved soon. That was part of the risk lock ordinance that was passed late last year. Implement, we implemented the employee parking permits, and the way that ordinance language reads is that employees need to park, essentially, the employees need to park with the town manager, or he says, needs to have them to park. In the past, employees have been told they need to park across the street in the old DPW lot. That was changed six town managers ago due to a number of issues over there. Not all of the Town Hall employees do park in this lot, I can tell you that, because I was in Town Hall the other day, and there was still plenty of parking, so if every employee was parked there, there wouldn't have been. But it is being addressed, and as has been said for a long time, the first step in any enforcement action is to get the ordinance to straightened out, and that's what we, that's what we've done, and that this should be the last piece of that as far as getting that Town Hall lot straightened out.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments from the public? Yes?
One other question.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you people realize, but it's very dark back there. They haven't fixed the lights. It's pitch black back there. There's just that one spotlight that's on the Town Hall, trying to illuminate the whole parking lot.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Close the public hearing. This will be coming up again in Old Business. Denise, do we have National Grid on? Yes, and?
I'm thinking it's Sebastian.
We have, we have two public hearings for National Grid.
Is this National Grid? He's not yet, he hasn't answered yet. Oh, here we go, Zama. Zama? Zama, can you hear? Can you unmute? Can you hear us? Neither one are answering.
It's going to be difficult to have a public hearing if they're not going to.
Right. Going to have to.
Yeah, can we open it, continue it?
We're going to have to, yeah.
Here, we're going to open up National Grid, project number 30498022, Fremont Street. And I'm going to ask for this to be continued. It could be continued later in the meeting if they are here. If not, we will have to continue to the next meeting. All right, this has been continued. We will now open up National Grid and Verizon Project number 30498022, Fremont Street. And we will ask for this to be continued also. It could be brought up at this meeting tonight, or it could be brought up at the next council meeting.
I'm speaking.
Motion to continue. Now we're back to the regular agenda, public comment. This is all wide open. Any public comment you wish to talk about? Yes.
Silly Mallory is Precinct 5. I have two things, just following up on the request of having meetings Zoomed, having all meetings Zoomed. Has there been any progress with that regarding any voting boards, or I forget what the term was used last time, but just seeing if there's any progress with that. And then the second part is, I am, I brought this up at the last meeting about revenue. I'm very concerned that we are not generating enough revenue for the town, and instead of having the residents go into their pockets with additional fees, you know, do we have projects down the line that we should be kind of putting into our vision now? So for example, does Town Hall need renovations? Does the library need renovations? Do we need any new, new development? These are things that I think we need to kind of look at and see if we do have a plan going forward, and then at least making us aware of it. That way, we do know whether or not we are going to be paying for a debt exclusion or another two and a half override. I think it'd be a really nice thing to make the community aware of it and also bring more engagement in as well. Thank you.
On your first question, I think you were talking about subcommittees being.
Yes.
Zoomed, whatever. This room is the only room right now that is capable of doing Zoom. We are looking into Senior Center and making that capable as well. So that is still being looked into, and we all think it's a good idea to have done, just more accessibility for the public.
Thank you.
On your second point on buildings, we are in the middle also of doing an assessment on all town-owned properties. We do have, I'm sorry.
Capital plan.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a fire.
It's public. So we also, I mean, we do have three relatively new school buildings, and, but it's still, maintenance is a key, and that's been something I think that we've learned a lesson for in the past.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But good points, well brought up. Public comment, continued. Yes?
John Ross, Precinct 6. Hello, everybody. First of all, thank you for sharing this. I don't know how often you hear that, but I think it's important to say. Up tailing on that point, actually. I was driving home from a business meeting in New Hampshire last night, so I missed the firehouse. But I do understand that there were a handful of people who attended, much smaller than the attendance we had a few weeks ago here. So I would second that notion that as soon as feasible, that we get Zoom equipment in whatever we consider to be the primary spillover room, which sounds like it's Senior Center. That would be really ideal. I was in the car after my appointment by about quarter to five, quarter to six. I would definitely hop on the Zoom just to listen in. I also noticed on the agenda that there was a How We Got Here presentation at the committee meeting, and I was just curious, was that an actual presentation, or was that just verbal? Is there a document that exists?
There is a doc, I could get you a copy of that Word document. Chief Wiley submitted a document, which he read into the record, which I, we could get you a copy of that.
Great, great. And that's different from the PDF about the actual design of the firehouse.
Yes.
That was posted. Okay, got it. That would be super helpful, because for whatever it's worth, when I was here a few weeks ago and came 20 minutes earlier to the meeting, but ended up outside with the group, just anecdotally around me, there were a lot of people that were very open to whichever direction the firehouse goes in terms of a decision, but just really want to be educated. So I would just encourage the council, especially on an issue like this, err on the side of over-communication. If there's a presentation like that, post it so that people can read it on their own time. And again, the Zoom meeting, anywhere the Zoom meeting can, can take place would be great. And I would echo your comment on being on the licensing board of the town. I know we've had requests to have the licensing board also Zoom as well, so, you know, if we can make that happen, it'd be great.
Thank you. And as far as documents, it was discussed last night about having a more comprehensive document, pretty much like an FAQ, like a frequently asked questions. And we're in the process, the committee's in the process of getting that done, and it will probably entail upwards of 20 questions that are most commonly asked with detailed answers asked to it. But that's an ongoing process, and it is an educational process.
I did like that you posted an email address for the committee, for the Firehouse Committee, so if anyone has questions in advance, it's every Monday, the meetings, pretty much.
It's every Monday, pretty much, I believe, the first public hearing, which will be May 11th, which, September 11th. May 11th will be a little late.
Well, a little late.
Where will that be held?
The public hearings will be held, well, can't say for sure. It's either going to be at the Senior Center. Ideally, we would like to have it at the auditorium at the high school, but school will be in session then, and I'm not sure if there's fall rehearsal for plays or whatever, so we have to ask the superintendent and go through the school department. But if it's not at the auditorium, it will be at the Senior Center, which have, which should have adequate space. And the regular meetings, the Monday meetings are, for the most part, Monday meetings, all the meetings will be listed also, and there is a tab, if you go to the Winter Town website, and at the top, there's a tab for projects. If you click it, there's a dropdown bar, the first thing says Firehouse Project, you could click on that for more information. But for the regular meetings, yes, last night, the attendance was somewhat limited, and people are very busy, but we don't, you know, we're still trying to figure out, is it worth it? Can we have the regular Firehouse Committee meetings here? Now we have the Zoom capability if the attendance is going to be under 30 or 40. And then the public hearings, obviously, would have to be at a bigger venue. And it's all about education at this point.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your question. Public comment, yes?
How do I bring up an issue regarding speeding down the street? Is that something that comes later, or do I?
No, if you have a question in regard to speeding on Herman Street, or just.
Horrible, horrible. They come across here at, like, late hour of the night, even during the day, and I'm just waiting for them to make the curve down here and hit that building where the condos are. They, they fly down the street. And like I said, my, my living room is basically on the sidewalk. I hear it all. And it's gotten worse. It really has. I don't know if speed bumps would curb it. I, I don't know what the answer would be. Even those lights, I don't know. I thought the, I thought it was 25 miles an hour in the whole town of Winfield.
It is throughout the town, unless.
Yeah. Well, it's only 25 out here. Not at all.
We will look into that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes?
Sorry, Silly Mallory is Precinct 5. I just want to add one little point as far as improving engagement. The website's great, well, sort of, it's getting there. It could be better. How about that? That's a better way to say it. All over Facebook, it is crazy, and you all probably see it, okay? We have several town, we have, there's a Town Council page, there's a Winter Mass page, I believe there's two Town Clerk pages, I'm not sure, one. I honestly think Facebook, it's free, we should be utilizing that, the agendas should be posted on that, getting the word out there, because I will tell you, I believe there were some people in this room that were posting like, hey, the meeting is tonight, and people were like, oh, it's too last minute for us. So I do think it's a free platform, and you're able to also see the engagement. If you're creating certain events or groups, you're able to see how many people are actually
you're able to see how many people are actually viewing your posts. It's a great way to see the statistics piece of it. And then that way, you know, people can't say, oh, I didn't know about the meeting, right? Why don't we over-communicate instead of just keeping it at that fair level? And use it, it's free.
I agree.
Thanks.
Before, Jillian, hand her hand up. Jillian Texera, precinct...
Jillian Texera, precinct six. I am asking the council to reconsider their vote on Locust Street, or at least pause the implementation of this plan. I've been a resident on, I believe residents need more time to come forward and speak. I also believe with the recent changes to the TSAC Committee, with the addition of the resident advisors, that this matter should be referred back to them for more consideration. The residents, sorry, I wrote this about six times. I've lived on Locust Street since 2009. Myself and many neighbors would speak often about how hard it was to get on and off our street and deal with parking in the intersections. Many lament that our street would be much better with a one-sided parking. In 2020, when I heard that the Traffic Safety Committee was taking up the conversation on Locust Street, I became actively involved. After attending a meeting and hearing their proposal, I reached out and strongly opposed it, along with several other residents. I took the time to meet with councilors and walk the street, and they, at the time, Council Peter Christopher, agreed with us that this would not change the issues we're facing on Locust Street. The one thing that I've asked over and over again, and so have other residents, is to have 10 signs placed on Locust Street to enforce the Town Municipal Code, Chapter 10.32.010, parking fines, Schedule C, violation code 09, within 20 feet of parking of an intersectionway upon any street or highway within 20 feet of intersection. This, the residents have asked for this and more enforcement of this rule. This is, TSAC has also asked for more enforcement of this rule to happen at at least two meetings that I was present at. We got two signs at the top of Locust Street, and they have made a difference. I would like the town or TSAC to request a report from the Police Department on how many town, how many tickets have been issued for this violation on Locust Street or in the town in general. Since driving around, I've noticed that many people park right in intersections, causing it very hard to turn. My 16-year-old is learning to drive. I've run up on many a curbs recently because of parking. I personally believe this law is broken and constantly is not enforced enough. I've been trying to find out if this information has ever been brought up at TSAC, but unfortunately, I've been unable to get any minutes newer than 2019 on the committee website. I will say, I spent a lot of time on our website. I was personally appalled when I noticed that the latest minutes from the Winter Library trustees, which I'm on and have taken minutes, also only seem to go to 2020. I also found Carla Vitale's email address still on certain pages linked. So, a review of our website might be in order in some places. I'm asking that the town reconsider their vote and consider adding, if it does not already exist, that if a street is to be changed to one-sided parking or to a one-way, that it be treated the same as if you're, if you're, if my house, if I needed to have a change to my house, whereas a legal notice should be published in the paper. I haven't read the paper, no legal notices have been published. That there should be a letter sent to a butters or people directly affected so that they could come and speak at a public hearing. I'm asking the Town Council and TSAC to once again look at the rest of Locust Street. I have been asking for three years for that street to be looked at as a whole. I don't understand on how turning one part of the street into a one-way helps our safety. It doesn't change the turning radius of a police truck, a fire truck, or an ambulance. Our street is used, was used as a detour for construction on Revere Street this week. I was almost hit three times, once on Cross Street and twice on Veterans trying to get onto my street due to illegally parked cars. I truly believe if the town took the time to put up signage and enforce, we would see a huge difference happening on Locust Street. Once again, the true issue on Locust Street is that it is used as a cut-through to avoid the Ford Bank's traffic on school days. Making it one-way will not help, will help maybe during the morning traffic, but I can only imagine what it's going to do to the afternoon traffic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gillian. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Jack Dowd, precinct one. I do appreciate the no dogs on the grass signs that have been put up down the center. I'm wondering when somebody's going to address the dog stains on that green grass for upcoming events. Also, there was a memorial garden for a deceased person in that area that was promised to be brought back into existence. So, when is somebody going to make that green area look presentable? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name's Kristen Boyd, and I'm actually also...
Kristen, in, address of precinct?
I'm a resident of Locust Street as well, and I just wanted to come and say I have nothing to add. I think Gillian covered it beautifully, but please reconsider looking at our street because there's a lot of issues going on, and I just don't think people are going to solve them, or if that complicates some of them. I have nothing to add as far as...
Thank you. Yes?
Mary Ann Nicoletti, precinct one, across the street. The garden that Jack is referring to is my little cousin Sabrina Fuglio. And the plaque my cousin has, and the bushes and everything that were planted were supposed to have been saved and replanted after the completion of French Square, and it hasn't been completed. It hasn't been put back. And it was a beautiful garden. It was a memorial affair. The people collected money, and actually, I think it was Blackstrap that did most of the donation of all the plants. But that is my side, so.
Thank you. We will, I will definitely check into that.
Thank you.
Any comments on Zoom? All right, correspondence?
I received none.
Anyone else?
I have.
Yes, John?
A resident on Pleasant, on the corner of Court Road and Pleasant, has notified me that she witnessed another accident on that corner where you're, where people are coming down Pleasant, past Donovan's, at such a high speed that they can't actually make the turn, and they end up driving into her or other people's houses. This has happened so many times. So, she's just witnessed another one. I think this one was coming from the other direction. And so, I'm just, I always just wanted to relay her concerns, and then after the Town Manager Report, we can talk about it in more, in more detail.
Thank you. Committee report, Vice President Roger.
There's, the Rules and Ordinance Committee didn't meet since our last meeting, but I sort of recapped our last committee meeting at the public hearing.
All right. School Department report, the school committee did meet last Monday evening. It was more preparedness, getting ready for back to school, which is incredible that we're two and a half weeks away from that. Everything else is going well. I know their buildings are checked as they are always before school starts, but Fire Department and Public Safety making sure everything's in order. Buildings are clean, well-maintained, and that was it for the school department report. Town Manager Report?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I wanted to, first off, thank the Fire Chief for filling in for me while I was on vacation. You did a great job. Thank you, Scott. Update on some of the stuff we talked about earlier, some of the studies that we have going on. We did reach out, the water system study, you know, the capital water system study, to take a look at the entire water system. They're still working on that. We're going to, currently anticipate early fall that that report will be done. The facilities needs assessment that was discussed with regard to all the town and school buildings, they're still working on that. We anticipate that around the same timeframe, maybe a little earlier. And payroll study that we ordered from the Collins Center, they're working on that. One of the employees that was the lead on that has left the Collins Center. Mary O'Cardy is taking that over, and I've got a meeting with her this week to find out where that stands and what's left to do. So, hopefully I have an update on that. Emails have been sent out to my office and maybe even some of the council members about the flooding on Girdlestone. DPW Director has ordered cameras out there. We've got a bunch of good video footage. We did find a break in one of the pipes that the DPW is currently fixing, and also the, one of the flapper valves that keeps the tide from coming back up the pipes. You know, when we get high tides, that was damaged, so they're working on, part of that's been replaced. They're actually waiting on the actual valve that should be in in two or three weeks, and then that will be installed. We'll see how much of it alleviates. We're also taking a look at one of the issues, and you know, Director Caliber has educated me on this, is we have undersized pipes in that area. So, he's looking at getting a study done to find out what it will cost to increase the capacity, so we can have, as we get heavy rains, there'll be more additional flow and possibly even rerouting the pipe out to get it out to the water in a little bit more direct path. So, we're looking at that. We're hoping the, fixing the pipe, the drainage pipe that was blocked and broken will help, along with the flapper valve. That should alleviate some of it, but we're going to see how that goes and look to upgrade that, pipes in that area. As promised at the last meeting, I know we talked about it, I did meet with the owners of the meat market, looking at, you know, potential other sites. You know, they've got a few good ideas. I've got a few. We're looking at some zoning issues and things like that, and working out with our local council some more to follow on that, but we made some good progress. I did attend last week, and it's kind of, you know, we don't talk about a lot of stuff in this town. We don't talk about, you know, probably enough about what the departments are doing, but as we all know, we've got the clear team, you know, led by Meredith. I was invited to and attended a Bureau of Justice mentoring meeting that they had on the, you know, with their national recognition that they've gotten from the federal government and some of the grants that they've gotten. And they had public health and law enforcement professionals in from Wisconsin and Oregon that were trying to institute similar programs in their state. And they was there to, you know, sort of pick the brains and ask questions and find out, you know, how we're doing it, and you know, a small town's so successful and doing such a great job, and you know, the national recognition that this town's getting in Meredith and her team. So, I just, kudos to them, and it was a very well, you know, well-done seminar, and you know, about two hours with lunch involved, and you know, going back and forth about ideas, and you know, the support from the council. They asked, you know, how do you get that? And you know, I said, well, the good work they're doing, you know, makes it really easy, so. But you know, there's, again, same problems we have, right? Finding funding and getting support, and you know, being able to get the programs off the ground. But that was really good and, you know, well-attended. Some questions came up about the ferry building. Ferry building, the main auditorium, we've had the bathrooms open, but now the main part of that meeting room, when you first walk in, that's being opened in the morning, the doors, when the staff gets in at seven. In fact, this morning, it was open. We were out there asking ferry members before they were getting on the ferry with the rain, if they wanted to wait inside. Most didn't. They've just had their umbrellas, and they walked down and waited for the ferry and the docks. But it was open and available for them to go inside and use it. We are working on getting a fob system on that main door so we can open it a little earlier, have it open at six, so for anybody to get on the early ferry, they'll have access if they need it, so. But that room has been cleaned out and available for people to use. And talk about the website, we're actually in the process of doing a website redesign. It's funny, we all have Civic Plus, and you know, I came here thinking, oh, it's all the same, but like everything, you know, you dig into it a little bit. And Civic Plus actually took over a company called Virtual Town Hall, and that's who we had. Unfortunately, Virtual Town Hall didn't have a lot of the features that I'm used to having, you know, with a Civic Plus platform. So, we need to upgrade to get the full benefits of, you know, what Civic Plus has to offer, which will be a lot of the social media stuff we're talking about, a redesign on the website. So, that's in the process right now, more to follow. But we're going to be doing a lot of what we talked about, streamlining the minutes, getting a better, easier-to-use platform and, you know, more accessible, so, on multiple levels, even offering different languages, things like that. So, that's in the process. So, I just wanted to let the council know that as well. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
And I will say, before I open it up, that, you know, traffic has still been horrendous. Not that that's our fault, but traffic getting into Boston and over the next...
For the home stretch.
You know, the good news is, there's only a couple of weeks left, pretty much, two and a half, three weeks left. The bad news is now colleges are opening up, and kids are coming in from all across the country to come back to Boston because we have such great institutions. But it's just going to create more traffic. I do want to send a thank you to the MBTA because I've used the T more in the last three weeks than I've used in the last probably 20 years, and it's, but it's clean, it's free, and you feel safe on it. I mean, I'm not out late at night, so I don't know that. But I mean, normal times to go into town, and if, for whatever reason, I mean, it's clean, it's safe, and it's, and it's been a blessing, and it hasn't been overly crowded at different times. So, I do thank the T for opening that up, and it's been a big help. And, you know, you did mention the ferry. The T is now in control of that, but from what I've heard, ridership is, is way up, and, you know, thanks to...
Many people using it, and yeah, it's great progress. Hopefully, we can still, talking to them to make it not seasonal, try to extend the season, get into December, maybe even January, so more to follow on that. But we're trying to push to, love it to be year-round, but you know, that's going to be work in progress, so.
I have another question.
You can't ask right now. There's another public comment period later in the meeting.
Do you want to send me anything?
Yes. Council Flockhart?
Thank you, Council President. Could you give us a follow-up on what's happened with the people who were displaced by the fire?
Sure. Most, other than three families, one resident, single, and then two other families are in process. Two of the families are on the list to get into, you know, housing, not necessarily Winter, but on housing lists. We anticipate them getting in, but they're still at the, you know, at the housing accommodations that we created for them. And then one other person is getting into some of the housing as well. I anticipate in the next, by the end of this month, I think most of it'll be done. There might be one more person that has to get in, but other than that, everybody else is settled and, you know, into other housing alternatives.
And how's progress on the building?
They're in the process. They're still deciding if they're going to fix it or possibly take it down. I've seen plans for both, so we'll see what happens. They're, that's still, owners of the building are still trying to decide which way to go.
Council Ayew?
Thanks. So, first of all, thank you very much on the ferry building. I know, probably those who don't know, it is more complicated than one can imagine, but having that building finally open after about a decade of struggling with it is...
And no more jet skis.
A little bit of a miracle, so I just want to say thank you. And then we'll get used as the inclement weather starts and gets colder and all that stuff.
You know, now, we've, actually, like I mentioned to you, I've talked to the MBTA about potentially, you know, maybe even selling the tickets in there. We've got the counter that's available. If they were to sell tickets in there, I think it would get more use than maybe even a little coffee stand and all that stuff.
That's right, that's right. I'm retired, I could rent a coffee stand.
There you go.
I don't get up there. The, two other quick things. I know you're doing all of the sort of capital liability studies.
Yep.
And I know we've got some dates that sort of say fall.
Yep.
One of my concerns is that it's also a relevant part of the discussion about the vote in November for the, for the fire station. So, I don't want the information to come too late. I also don't want it to come as a last-minute surprise.
I get it.
These are going to be, you know, I think this council has done the right thing by asking you to accelerate and understand our capital liabilities. It's not going to be a pretty picture.
Right.
So, if at the next meeting, you can sort of give us a detailed outline of the categories of buildings, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, and expected date of when the numbers are going to come in so that we can sort of manage the discussion, because as I say, not having a number before the election, people are going to yell at us, and if it's the week before the election, people are going to yell at us. So, let's just manage the flow of information.
I can tell you it's Director Caler and I's weekly calls to these vendors to find out what's going on, and yeah.
Yeah, the earlier the better.
We're pushing.
The earlier the better, because otherwise. And then, if, I don't know if it's the next meeting, the meeting after, there's still a number of sort of transportation issues, I think, to cover, like, where's the T on getting some of the bus shelters on the rerouted street, some of the Pleasant Street additional activity that we wanted for possible look at an intersection up by Winter Street. We had also talked about a study to be done at the entrance of town of Pleasant and Main Street coming off the Belle Isle Bridge. So, just get a sense of sort of what's funded, what's not funded, et cetera, et cetera.
The last one I can give you an update on, we actually have a...
Yeah, you don't have to do it today.
That's fine. No, but I have some info on that one.
Okay, all right.
We got one price, but we thought, from CHA who's doing our current project, we thought the price was a little high, so we're going back out to some other engineers to shop that and see if we can get a better price. But we are, that's in, actively being worked on.
But if we, as the agenda sees fit, either the next meeting, the meeting after, if we could spend a bunch of time on all the transportation issues, that would help.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And if we could ask, well, I see the DPW Director here, and thank you. And if we could just get an update with schools starting and such, where Revere Street is, and, you know, from McGee's Corner all the way to the Revere line, basically.
So, we're doing our best to get away from Dean Engels to Kennedy Drive. We'll wrap up the Shirley Street intersection, which is where we are right now. You see that big, four or five plates over there at this point. This should be wrapped up by the end of next week. We have several more valves to put in between Shirley Street and Argyle, and that will wrap up. So, by the end of, right before school starts, we, the majority of our work on Revere Street will be done. We will have some miscellaneous hydrants to put in after school is in, but we can work around school traffic. There won't be street crossing, excavations, they'll be isolated, you know, there'll be lane movement, you know, so we can certainly work around school for that. I had a discussion with the Town Manager today about three areas remaining on the project that I think we need to have a real discussion about going back to nights to do. I think the interruption to businesses and just, you know, still with the other projects going, we're going to have to have that discussion as to whether or not we want to, you know, go back to nights, you know, to wrap up the last... go back to nights, you know, to wrap up the last three to four weeks of this project. We're very close, Grover's is done, sidewalk on Grover's is going to be Grover's Ave, which is away from Revere Street, will be starting next week, the sidewalk restoration. I have a meeting tomorrow with National Grid Electric, National Grid Gas, and United Civil, who's their project manager for the work on the Revere Street leg between the Town Line and Crest Ave. Obviously, we want them out of there before the tip project begins, National Grid Gas is hoping to be done by the end of September, if they bring in a second crew, we're just going to work on the logistics, if two gas crews can work in unison with the United Civil who's doing the street and sidewalk restoration at this point, so just a lot of stuff going on in a small area, but we're still aiming for that work to be done by the end of November. But to get back to Revere Street, we will make sure that once school resumes, morning traffic and afternoon traffic will not be impacted by any of the work on Revere Street, we'll schedule that around those two time periods.
And when you say the work from the Crest Ave leg of Revere down to the Revere line, Revere Street down there, yeah, can you say by the end of November?
By the end of, well, that was the schedule that was given to us by United Civil to have all the sidewalks, which, all the electric work is done on that leg, they've removed all the direct battery, they've energized all their new wires and the new conduits that they put in. The final phase for that project for United Civil, which is electric company's contractor, is to fix the sidewalks, do a full reclamation of the roadway, and a new service. They would have been done, and they still, we're still pushing for them to be done by November 30. National Grid Gas had an old gas main that couldn't be worked on until they found the proper route for the, for the electric conduit to go in, so there was coordination between National Grid Gas and National Grid Electric, which you'd think that it would be in-house coordination, they treat each other as two separate companies, so it's a very difficult coordination effort. We've been, myself and Tony and the police chief and the finance chief, we've been trying to be the mediators between that to get to our goal of being done, knowing that the tip project is, you know, following light in shadows, and we'll get it done. Worst-case scenario for that restoration portion of the project will be final surfacing in the spring, the reclamation will be done, sidewalks will be done, the road will be put in binder for the winter, and then it'll be, you know, the final wearing surface will be put in the spring ahead of the tip project beginning.
Thank you. Vice President, you have...
Thank you, you stole my question, I was looking for a construction update as well, but just you mentioned the possibility of night work, and obviously I've heard it, I think the managers heard it, I think you've heard it, that's not a real popular option, you know, in our neighborhood. I guess I'd just advocate if there's anything we can do to sort of avoid that, that would be greatly appreciated, I know that doing it during the day may affect businesses, so there's going to be some trade-off, either going to affect businesses, you're going to affect people's sleep schedule, I know there's no perfect solution, but I just felt like I needed to say something publicly, you've both have heard it, you know, it's not, not something that people...
Long discussion about that today, we're going to take a ride down there tomorrow to come up with a plan, it's just it's, the road has to be shut down, like it's too narrow to do anything else, we've got to work on all the drainage pits, so there's just no, neither during the day, it's just, you know, it's, you know, all the, I mean, literally Jackson, everybody else was on there, we're just, nobody would be able to get to there, so, and then, you know, and had no access to the parking lot, so it's got a, you know, it's a balance, but we're trying to come up with a plan.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
And just for clarification, if anybody's out there, we're not talking about Revere Street anymore, there's more Crest Ave.
There's Crest Ave, that's an hour piece there, yeah.
Council Muntzen.
Thank you, Council President. Tony, I was just going to ask you about two or three things, I did want to give you guys a lot of kudos for getting right on top of the Towson-Girdlestone Pleasant area, you guys were working there today, taking care of that break in the pipes, and so boots to the ground really quick, super impressive, hopefully that remediates some of the flooding, but in terms of the study, and I'm not trying to like put, you know, pressure, I'm just asking, in terms of like timing, do you know when a study would get done?
Not too long the study, then it's going to be the funding source, right, now we've got to put a price to it, you know, and then it's going to be taking up the street, increasing the pipe size of the pipe, rerouting it, so I mean, more to follow, but I would say, what do you think, Steve, 30?
Yeah, so what we're doing right now is, as the manager spoke to, we've done video inspection of the pipes, we've done cleaning investigative work to kind of find our quick deficiencies, and that's what we're working on right now, that one collapsed leg in Pleasant Street and a new flapper valve. There's not so much a study is what's happening now as a cost estimate, we know based on the videos and based on the pipe sizing of our, of our system, that we have insufficient capacity there for the drain, we've got eight-inch drains that really should be 15 to 22-inch drains, so now it's going to be a cost estimate and, you know, and a proposal on what it's going to cost to design and build this project, that's the funding source that the manager's talking about.
So it's not a study per se, it's a cost quotes from contractors or companies?
Exactly, and, you know, and, you know, a summary of what the needs are for that product.
Is the scope of the project, and I don't want to belabor it because I have two additional points, but is the scope of the project to extend along Pleasant Street and then down to Main to where the, it meets the bridge, or where is this limited to?
So it's, so no, so that drainage, the limits of that drainage in that neighborhood don't, it doesn't meet up to Main Street, it goes just past the Pleasant Park Yard Pub, picks up two catch basins, from that side it flows back to basically right in front of, not quite the Alas Marina, but place right beside it that's...
We know what you mean. We know what you honestly, Grill?
Yeah, it's privately owned now, but that's where, that's where the main hall is, it takes directional flow from Main Street, and it takes flow from as far up Pleasant Street as Lincoln, it takes Marshall, it takes Tyles, and it takes Girdlestone, it takes Sunset as well, so there's a big watershed that comes all down to that one outfall pipe in eight-inch pipe, so, you know, even fixing that portion of pipe that we're talking about on Pleasant Street, it's, it's going to help, but if you take a five-gallon bucket and dump it into your kitchen sink, it doesn't just flow down the drain, it sits there until that inch-and-a-half pipe can accommodate that water, that's what happens every time we get heavy rain, pipes fill up and they start coming out of the catch basins and they flow into people's yards, so fixing a broken pipe is the proper thing to do, but on these heavy downpours, we're still going to have some issues.
This isn't one of the water mains that has been, already been replaced?
Drain.
Drain, okay. I appreciate it, I just look forward to hearing the cost estimates and seeing if we can get a long-term resolution in place at some point. Two other points and then I'll be brief. The signage you guys and the crosswalk you did on Tyleson across Pleasant has helped, I can see people actually crossing safely now, they don't feel rushed or like their life's being threatened, but it does, there are two points on that Pleasant Street that are still of concern, I mentioned one earlier, where there was another accident and there's been homes being driven into, I know over by Tracy's house on the corner, past that area, there's been a lot of great signage, like it's blinking, and, you know, she has an anchor there to protect someone from driving into her house, but, you know, I think there was plans to put a, some kind of a barrier...
It's finished though, it's finished.
It's finished, and now, is there any potential of getting a caution, some kind of flashing caution sign on that bend from basically where Pleasant and Court connect, you guys know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, you're talking about the bend further down, so we did put flashy signs at, at, in the area of 55th Street, and we could look to do something similar down that other area, it's, the curb line, we had the benefit of having a wide curb line there, so the guardrail didn't hinder, you know, the sidewalk in any way because you had a grass grip there. A guardrail down in that other end may narrow that sidewalk, it may be kind of intrusive to somebody's front door or their house, but we can certainly look at it.
I mean, a solar...
We can certainly put more signage.
A solar sign with some flat, you know, I think that's a basic remedy for, you know, it's at the very least, and I think there was one a while back, I think it might have been taken down, I'm not sure, that's what one of the correspondents says, that there was some caution signs before. But last point I want to make, and this is about the possibility, and just speak freely because I'm not sure if this is even a potential thing or not, but as far as I'm concerned, it would be wonderful to see, make our developments for the future very transparent by putting all planning board and Board of Appeal agenda items on the town manager blog so that people are getting the information sent to them, not having to find it, is that possible?
Well, on the blog, yes, but again, it's trying to link it back to the website, it's what I talked about earlier, features that I had before that I assumed I had now, I don't, so as far as linking it and making the live links and all that, that's the older Virtual Town Hall platform, it's not there, so we're getting there, but I still need to do the website update.
So just time, but it's definitely doable, wonderful, thank you so much.
Oh, we include them in the blog for sure, I just wanted to, perfect world, I'd like to link them back to the website, but I'm not there yet, so.
Council Ayala.
Question to Steve if I could, so the problem you guys have been discussing down at the bottom of Pleasant Street down there, Tyleson and Girdlestone, I've seen and observed all that flooding there, we've seen these horrendous downfalls, and the last one I drove through, there was flooding right across from the hardware store on, I guess Pleasant Street, take a turn, there was flooding in the place of fixing it, there was flooding down by Donovan's Beach, and then another pocket of flooding down, I was going to the Landing down by the Elks, right?
Yep, all similar issues.
All similar issues, are there more than that, I'm not seeing, I mean, that's the part of town I drive in, but how big is this problem?
Up a Hyland's near Sewell Ave, is an area that floods, you know, similar situations. They're all outfall pipes, they're, they're, they're small diameter pipes, they're difficult to get to, the one near Belle Isle, behind Belle Isle Seafood, we managed to open it up, but there's still a pretty good blockage in that outfall, that in addition to the small pipes and the shallow catch basins, they fill up very quick, and they, you know, it doesn't take, you know, a lot of rain, a quick duration, heavy rainstorm, you know, you move the capacity in, you know, 20 to 30 minutes, and the rest of it's just overflow until, until we catch up.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, it would be helpful in the next capital plan cycle to sort of have a list of all those things and then have a prioritization of what we should attack first versus second versus third, so, all right, thank you.
No matter who you talk to, which neighborhood you talk to...
Everybody's first, no, I know. I know. Thank you. Denise, is National Grid on?
Yep.
Are we sure they're on? Motion to go out of order to go, to revert back to...
Motion.
Hearings, motion by Council Fusillo, second by Council Ayala, any discussion on it, seeing none of those in favor, say aye. Aye. We will go back and we will reopen, which has been continued. The first public hearing for National Grid, which is project number 30498022 Fremont Street, this is just the National Grid project, not the National Grid Verizon project. Who is here to speak on National Grid's behalf?
Zama Garcia, can you unmute, please?
Can you get your mic?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry about that earlier.
That's okay.
Uh, yeah, so I'm here to petition for a whole, new pole and anchor on the intersection of Pauline, you know, Fremont Street as well, new conduit and, and hole on Fremont Street.
Excuse me, can we? Yes, I'm sorry, continue?
Yeah, I was saying, for a new conduit across Fremont Street and a new handle on sidewalk in front of 54 Pauline Street.
Okay, and this project does not involve any polls, any double polling, anything like that?
Yes, it does.
A double poll?
There's a double poll just up the street.
Yes.
We have a question.
There's, there's two separate petitions here.
Yes, one's Verizon National Grid and one's just...
So the first petition, I apologize if you've already said this, first petition was just an underground feed from a pole opposite 5 Fremont, that shouldn't have no additional poles involved, it should just be an underground conduit coming out of an existing pole, is that correct?
That's right, yes, pole 538 to a new handle across the street.
No, that, that, that I don't have any issues with, I'm sorry, this is Steve Keller, Director of Public Works, my, my, my only comments on that particular petition will be infrared patching on Fremont Street, any asphalt openings, infrared patching, and then sidewalk work will need to be, you know, concrete, no asphalt patching on the sidewalks.
Okay.
Are we dealing with these petitions separately, or can you speak to the second petition about the one that requires the pole and guy wire?
Just for clarification, just for clarification though, this first project is not that project, correct? Can you just specify what the first project you're speaking about, just solely National Grid, not National Grid and Verizon?
Yes, the first one National Grid only is new conduit, two-point conduit across Fremont Street from an existing pole to a new handle that's going to be placed on the sidewalk.
Okay, and that pole will be in front of?
No, that's not a pole.
No, that, the first one is no pole?
Oh, yeah, it's an existing pole.
Existing pole, okay.
Okay.
Same thing, yeah, pole 58 is an existing pole.
All right, are there questions from the council, Council Flockhart?
Yes, this work that's being done underground now, this is new conduit, this has nothing to do with the wires that are already above ground.
No, this is the new, yeah, this is a new, a new electrical feed to that, that...
New development. To that new building that's on Fremont Street, okay.
Will, will the, so there is an existing overhead feed to that building now, or a piece of that building, is that coming out, or is that going to remain with the new underground feed for the remainder of the building?
No, that should be removed, so it's going to be an underground service?
So the overhead service will be removed?
Correct.
It'll be removed by the end of the project, or is this another thing that we have to wait months for?
It should be before, because National Grid does consider, they have two services to one single building, so before the new service gets put, before the new underground service gets put, the overhead service has to be removed.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions from the council? Vice President, you have?
I'm on, looking on Google Maps, and it looks like that is a double pole that is going to be removed, or is it not?
No pole being removed.
No pole being removed.
No poles being removed.
Just the service from that pole to the building, you know, there's an existing overhead service speeding that old, older part of the building.
So if that service is no longer needed, why does the pole stay, or am I not understanding?
We've still got primary wires going across.
Oh, for the rest of the street.
The service connects that to the building.
Okay, so if that is a double pole, can we get the double pole removed?
It's not a double, it's not a double pole, is it?
Like I said, I'm just looking on Google Maps, so this might be old.
There is a double pole up the street, up Pauline Street.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions from the council? If not, we will close that public hearing, now we will open the public hearing with National Grid and Verizon project number 30498022 Fremont Street. National Grid?
Yes, sorry, so for this sort of work, proposed in itself, a new pole on the intersection of Pauline and Fremont Street, that's what I can say, anchor.
As well as a what?
Anchor, on anchor.
I got a few comments for that.
And we'll go to the DPW director for questions.
So my question to that, so that, that intersection right now is very congested with, with, with poles and wires, you have three poles currently there, all within less than 100 feet from each other, why the need for the third pole, which would be less than 50 feet from, from one of the poles?
Yeah, so the need for, we're, we're placing because we're not placing three-paged primary on it, and so we don't have, and if, it's still going to be clearance to the parking lot structure at 44 Pauline Street, that building, if we were to pay them, say, if the pole was 580, we wouldn't need the required standards from National Grid, so it's safety and clearance requirement.
So it, a pole and a guy wire at that corner, it just, it's right out of handicap pedestrian ramp, it just doesn't fit in that corner, can, is there a way to remove any of those other poles and maybe shift that, that crosswalk a little bit down Fremont Street if that pole absolutely has to go to the corner, right now your footprint just isn't there. Right now, your footprint just isn't there. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult there right now, just the snow removal operations, and now you're going to put another pole there, it's just, it's going to be too congested. If there's a way to redesign it so that one or two of those other poles could be removed, then I, I think the discussion is, you know, we can talk about, you know, placement of another pole. But I just don't understand the need for this other pole for safety. If it's for safety, then you're going to be moving all your existing wires potentially to it. Why do those other poles have to remain?
So the other poles down the street, on Fremont, don't have primary on them, so they're just secondary, secondary wiring, so those are just one single wire. The new wires that are going to come to that new pole are going to be three towards, to a bracket, you know, with a paper long bracket. Top, you know, full top construction.
Right, but then, but then where are those wires going? Are you, are you putting a, what's going at the top of that pole other than the, than the primary wires? Because you don't have it down the rest of Fremont, it's just dead-ended at that one pole?
All right, we're going to put the three, the three-phase wire and a three-phase bank, and then we're going to go secondary to the next pole down the street, which is pole five eighty. And then from there, we're going to go underground to the service across the street, which would be 54 Pauline Street.
But why can't they do it from 54?
What's the timeframe on this project, potential?
For construction?
Yes.
I mean, I don't deal with the, with the actual schedule, but it'll be a few, few months?
A few months worth of work, or a few months when you start the project?
When we start the project, we have a couple of days.
Okay, so it's a couple of days.
A couple of days ago.
Yep.
This second petition doesn't affect that underground service of the first petition we discussed, does it?
It does, yeah.
You can't feed that building without this work being done?
All right.
Counsel Flotkat.
Why can't they run this wire from five seventy, pole five seventy-nine? It's on the corner of Fremont Street.
Five thirty-nine doesn't have a three-phase bank on it.
Upgraded.
But there is a three-phase bank on Pauline Street, correct? Existing?
No, it's a single-phase bank, so I have a catch former on pole five eighty.
Well, you got, you got three-phase further down Pauline Street, I know that for a fact, down there, Woodside. I'm just wondering if we could feed that building from Pauline Street instead of putting a new pole in to feed the building?
Yes, okay, so, due to the customers' load size, they require their own three-phase bank, the three-phase bank that's on Pauline Street wouldn't be able to, it's not big enough to feed some people.
Is there an engineering group, a team that maybe we can sit down with or walk the site and just look at all options? I, just another pole in that area is going to be extremely congested. More wires is going to make the corridor of Pauline Street just look like a bunch of wires and telephone poles.
Right, and there are trucks pulling in and out of that parking lot, aren't there?
Underground, it's, yeah, I'd like to look at that option. You know, I think that there's other options, you know, this may be the simplest thing to do, but I, I would like to be able to speak to whoever is engineering and designing this to see what the other options are.
Of course, yeah, that's right, I, I think, well, we can have a meeting with one of the, with the designer of this job, and give over different options if, if add any employees are concerned with the event.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So just for a clip?
I was going to ask, you probably just, procedurally, how?
Yeah, procedurally, now we'll close this public hearing, we'll bring this up in new business, and we will refer it to public safety.
Okay.
And we are hoping that we will have conference with National Grid and with DPW Director, along with public safety, maybe you could have them at your subcommittee, and we, in the meantime, they could address other alternatives that might be more beneficial for the town of Wentworth, but not necessarily the easiest. All right, so we will close.
Does the public not get anything to say in this?
Yes, public can speak.
No, just listening to Karen Chavez preaching to, just listening to this, I think that National Grid should come in here and talk, not doing it here. The way that Mr. Callow is speaking, there is other ways to get around this, and especially if it's in the way of a handicapped spot that the town has spent a lot of money doing all over the town.
No, totally agree, and there needs to be a better solution to this, and I'm sure there is a better solution, it might not be the most economic, exactly.
Right.
Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Jack Dowd, precinct one. This whole area around the center of town is all underground, starting at George Street. I don't know how far it goes down here on Pauline Street, but the best idea would be to extend the underground service to that building.
Thank you. Any comments on Zoom for this public hearing? All right, seeing none, we will close this public hearing. We will go back to item number 12, Old Business, Town Hall Municipal Parking Lot. Vice President Ruggiero?
All right, so I'll read the motion that was passed a few weeks ago, and it doesn't need a second because it's coming out of committee, but as we know, that will start the discussion period. Okay, the motion is that the Wentworth Town Council accept the recommendation of the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, which makes the following amendments to the town ordinances related to Town Hall Municipal Parking Lot or take any other action relative thereto. amend the ordinance listed by modifying the following language. 10 dot 52 municipal parking lots, 10 dot 52 dot 040 additional regulations. In the event portions of a municipal, in the event portions of a municipal lot have posted parking restrictions that contradict the limits listed in this ordinance, the restrictions posted by permanent signage as approved by the town council and listed below shall take precedence. Town Hall Lot, two spaces directly adjacent to Herman Street on the side of Town Hall Lot, on the side of Town Hall designated as 30-minute parking during posted Town Hall business hours. One space designated as disabled veteran only during posted Town Hall business hours. So it will now read, Town Hall Lot, four spaces directly adjacent to Herman Street on the side of Town Hall, and one space directly to the left of the designated handicap spaces in the Town Hall Lot designated as 30-minute parking for Town Hall and library business only during posted Town Hall and library business hours. Note that the handicap parking space adjacent to Herman Street will be relocated directly next to the existing handicap space inside the Town Hall Lot and will share an access aisle. That's the official motion just being read into the record that was also circulated to the council.
All right, the motion is on the table, it does not require a second, it came out of committee with positive recommendation. Discussion on the motion. And if, if Mike is still on and would like to be heard, he is welcome to be heard. Counsel Munson.
Thank you, Council President. Based on what the trustee, the library trustee, Gillian Tashara, precinct six, spoke of earlier, there is no handicap ramp at the back of the library. So adding an additional handicap location there doesn't seem to make a lot of sense now in hindsight. Secondarily, I guess I was under the impression that the handicap spot would also be conjoined or, or with the veterans' spot that we were giving up there. So I feel as though we have, I may have misunderstood the direction of it, and now I would like to revise or make a possible amendment upon further discussion.
You can make a jump in there. There's already handicap spot back there.
That's right.
But it's meant, those two spots are meant for the Town Hall building. We know there's no handicap ramp there, we've actually put in an application last year to get funding for that.
Okay.
To try to get a design and put one in, we weren't successful last year, we're going to re-put it in again this year when the application deadline opens up. That'll be addressed, because they're our right, you have to be, have the handicap spot out on the street, on the other side of the building, you know, to get into the handicap access, so that we're working on. But these two spots would still be able to be accessible for Town Hall, come in, up the ramp, around the side, and into the elevator, so that's, that's the design.
So the feasibility of a ramp is there, it's just a matter of timing and running.
We just have to do it, it's going to have to turn on itself, obviously, but yeah, we just have to get the funding and get a design.
I didn't know if the slope was too steep or that you had to do a little wraparound or whatever.
You'd have to wrap, for sure.
There is a ramp from the parking lot up to the sidewalk so that you could go around.
I did see that.
John Morgan and I walked that last meeting.
To this door?
Yes, and the elevator.
Right, which is perfect.
Yeah, but you're right about the library.
I just feel as though, sorry if I'm speaking out of turn, I just feel as though the spot that was previously here for veterans, disabled veterans, it wasn't necessarily a trade in making that spot move over to the E.B. Newton where the veterans' office is, it wasn't a trade, it was, that needed to happen anyway. And so, but it does feel as though we would be dishonoring the veterans by not having a location in this lot.
We're putting in, we're, there's an amendment to put a spot.
Okay, all right, that's what I would like to...
I was at the last meeting, but I would have made that.
I would like to make that amendment unless you have better wording, so at the very least, I just don't want to see the veterans not have a spot, so.
If you would like to make an amendment?
I can read.
Would you choose to make an amendment?
I'd like to make an amendment that reads that the Wentworth Town Council accept the recommendation of the TSAC committee and make the following amendments to the town ordinance related to Town Hall Municipal Parking Lot or take any other action relative thereto. Amendment would be modified in the following language, in 10.52, municipal parking lots would read, "In the event portions of municipal lot have posted parking restrictions that contradict the limits listed in the ordinance, the restrictions posted by permanent signage as approved by the town council and listed below shall take precedence." Town Hall Lot, two spaces directly adjacent to Herman Street, this is all redundant, right?
So that's how it reads now?
That's how it's reading now.
This is how it's reading now?
Yes.
So it will now read?
No, well, you have to say what it's reading now.
I have to read the full thing? Okay, I didn't know if I was belaboring it. Two spaces directly adjacent to Herman Street on the side of Town Hall designated as a 30-minute parking during posted Town Hall business hours. One space designated as disabled veteran parking only during posted Town Hall business hours. That's what it currently reads at. So it will now read, four spaces directly adjacent to Herman Street on the side of the Town Hall designated as 30-minute parking for Town Hall and library business only during posted Town Hall and library business hours. One space directly to the left of the posted handicap spaces designated as veterans' parking only during posted Town Hall and library business hours. You took the words out of my mouth, a lot more words, though.
That's a very good amendment, thank you. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
There's a second by Counsel Fusillo. Any discussion on the amendment? Vice President Ruggiero?
I support the amendment, I just also want to point out that in the municipal lot ordinance that this council passed months ago when we were taking up the CBD parking and all that other fun stuff, there's a provision in there that the town manager can allow, excuse me, that the police chief can allow temporary signage for, for certain events within municipal lots. So, for example, on the day of the Veterans Food Bank, if there's an anticipated, you know, flux of folks, then through the town manager and the police chief, you know, temporary signage can be put up that says, you know, veterans' parking only on this day between this time for this event. So that, you know, I, I think it's great that we're adding this amendment, but I also just want to point out that there's a guardrail already in place there through the municipal lot ordinance that we already passed, but I do support this amendment, I think it's a good idea.
Counsel Belcher.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge some of the issues that people brought up tonight. There's several issues in this area involving the back lot and potentially where teachers are parking, but we kind of have to look at these things in pieces, and I think this is a good step to make towards making Town Hall more accessible to everybody, and now we have a list of things to look at next, so I appreciate the comments.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Counsel DiMarco. Point made earlier, this can work, but enforcement's got to be a key piece to that.
This is again on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Something we're discussing.
I'm sorry, I support the amendment.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions on the amendment, I'll ask for a roll call vote on the amendment.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel Fusillo?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Belcher?
Yes.
Counsel Iello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luttrell?
Yes. The amendment is passed, and now we're back on the original motion with the amendment. Further discussion on the original motion as amended?
Well, the...
Counsel DiMarco.
Enforcement is, is a key piece to this, that's all I was going to say.
Counsel Munson.
Two quick points, I second the notion that enforcement needs to be addressed, and there's a possibility of that the police is, have we discussed the possibility of having a third party come in and parking service, parking ticket service, meter maid service?
We have had a third party in the past with tickets.
I have a bird's eye view.
But there is not, it's, I know right now.
Yeah, I know, the union contract, that's a bigger conversation.
Okay, and then secondarily, just for everyone's general information, if one wanted to create a handicap space on Herman or any public road, what would the process for one...
It's an application.
Okay, and the process would just need to have whose approval?
Well, we'll go through handicap accessibility, right?
Yeah, when we get the application, we bring it to the Handicapped Disability Commission, and then also it's sent to the town manager and the police chief, police and chief of fire.
Thank you so much.
And DPW, Steve.
You get the application?
Vice President Ruggiero?
So, yeah, just to piggyback off of that, it sounds like we heard a lot of concerns tonight, and it sounds like we have potential solutions for a lot of them. It sounds like there's a process in place, and already your question from TSAC to put a handicap spot on Herman Street?
Yeah.
So that's in the works. Sounds like the town manager is working on some sort of employee placards, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but...
No, the plaque, I got an email today, the placards came in, so we're going to do the, reinstitute the employee placard process, and then obviously address the school parking issue in the back parking lot and on the street.
Okay.
I'll talk to the school superintendent about that and try to get a memo up.
That's in place. During our municipal lot ordinance that we passed already, we didn't put any restrictions on the Walden Street Lot, which it's a little bit farther of a walk to get up to the Coming School, but I know that's something that we kept in mind when we passed that ordinance as well. We also heard tonight from a member of the library trustees that parking is tight in this area for library business at certain times of day. So, you know, I don't think this solves all of the problems, but it sounds like there are a lot of things in the work that will make this work, hopefully, and, and, you know, yeah, I mean, again, this came to us from TSAC, and it's something that we should take seriously.
Counsel Flotkat.
The Walden Street Lot is empty most of the time, except when there's something going on at E.B. Newton, that the people park there to get to the special event.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I park there a lot, and I'm usually one of three cars.
During school?
During school.
During school, yes.
Any further discussion on the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote on the motion as amended.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel Fusillo?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Belcher?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Flotkat?
Yes.
Counsel Iello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luttrell?
Yes.
Thank you.
New Business, motion's passed. New Business, we will take these together, National Grid project number 30498022 Fremont Street, National Grid and Verizon project number 30498022 Fremont Street. These will be sent to Public Health and Safety, and we are very concerned about the second one in particular with the new pole, and we are hoping that through your meeting and through the DPW, we'll have discussions with National Grid to come up with a better option.
Okay, I'll be in touch with Steve.
Okay, so referred. Public comment? Yes, John?
On to Ross, precinct six. Well, there's so much talk tonight about road signage and experience hurrying across streets to save your life, I have a request, near and dear to my heart. I live at One Coral Avenue, right at the corner of Coral and Shirley. So anyone who's familiar with that intersection knows that occasionally when you're crossing that intersection, if you hooze, you should speed up, because there are cars going by rapidly. One ask I would have of the council and the DPW, and for town manager, if possible, if intersection, if you lose, you should speed up because there are cars going by rapidly. One ask I would have of the council and the DPW and for town manager, if possible, if there is any budget left in the signage budget at this point, that section, starting at Coral, going down about four blocks towards Way of Way, there is no signage there that tells anyone that that's a one-way street. I was walking across the street the other day, and usually I'm very aware and fairly swift to get across the street. I was almost not swift enough with a car coming probably at about 35 mile an hour wrong way on my block. So it would, ever since I've lived there for five years now, that's kind of been an issue. If you guys could just take a look at that, when you go further down Shirley, there are wrong-way signs down there. So it tends not to happen once you get about four blocks south of where I am, but that, that immediate area where I live can be a little dangerous. If you guys could look into that, that'd be great.
Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Check out precinct one. The manager, these big gas pipes that are going in on the gas street, are there any way connected to Deer Island?
I can't answer that question. Yes, maybe at some point. I mean, you know, there's probably gas out to Deer Island, so I'm not positive, but we have to check.
It's a new gas, I mean, when Deer Island was built out.
I'd have to check with National Grid. I don't have a definitive answer.
I'm just curious, what's going underneath the ground?
Yeah.
I don't think of any of the locusts around that street, and the water main goes home on those streets also. As far as the asphalt, new asphalt on these projects coming into Winthrop and Crest Ave and over the hill on Revers Street, are any of these places where you have the roads ripped up for gas and water, are they going to be new asphalt on those roads? Or is it going to be new asphalt after the TIPS project is completed?
Could be new asphalt on Crest Avenue, Groves Avenue is part of our water main mark.
And the rest will be.
And then the Revers Street stuff, and then that leg of Revers Street from Crest Ave to the Town Line will be done by the electric company.
Fisher.
At least the binding.
At least the binding.
All right. As far as speeding cars, anybody has their stories. I certainly have mine. Your, yours. It seems to be a big problem. But I do know that the police are enforcing speeding tickets recently, maybe a month ago, but I think that should continue. It's a big deal. I've had to jump out of the way more than one occasion. As far as the, those fences, those heavy wood fences you put up on various locations, I don't know.
Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street.
Walden Street.
Coming from the High Tide towards, you know, going towards Boston on the corner of Winthrop and Washington Ave, the new owner of the house brought up these big ballers, the Tyos freighters, and he always decorates them in season, so to speak. But they've certainly improved his chances of not having a car landing in his second floor window. So people are concerned about, you know, speeding cars. Thirty years ago, you know, Steve McQueen was coming out of Deer Island at 100 miles an hour, and he went right through the yard and just about reached the house on that corner with Shirley Street. And he put, he put out four-ton rocks, and no cars have gone through the yard since then. So people, you know, if I lived in an area where I was afraid that I was going to get demolished, property or otherwise, by speeding cars, I'd do something about it very quickly. So the owners of these houses that they're afraid they're going to get hit should do something immediately. You know, it's a cost factor, but, you know, many people have done it. There's another retaining wall type situation, a few of those up this area, to prevent cars from landing in their porch or in their anchor or otherwise. So do something for yourself. Don't wait for the time to do it. Make sure your house is safe when, you know, cars going 70 miles an hour and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Gillian.
Gillian Tashara, precinct six. Just once again, to bring up Locust Street, I had in an email that I did not send to you all again. Enforcement, if you turn Locust into a one-way, what is to stop the people who drive down the wrong way during Revere Street, during school pickup to avoid all the traffic and turn left from just going the wrong way? I have been a many times, I have friends on Mermaid that we walk because it's just easier, and I can't tell you how many times my kids and I have been across and been almost hit by wrong-way drivers. And when you yell, "It's one-way," do you know what they do? They go faster, and then they turn down wrong, more one-way is the wrong way. No enforcement. Are we supposed to, as residents, sit there and take photos of every car that goes the wrong way, or will police detail be provided during school hours to make sure that people aren't, they already disregard all the other signage in town? What's going to make them follow this and not cause even worse accidents? So, once again, the wrong way, one-way streets doesn't fix everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Myriam Nicoletti, precinct one. Two things. Getting back to MBTA, I know the bus schedule changed. They're still coming down the street, and I've had to call them several times to let them know. And there's one particular driver that will not pay attention to do what he's supposed to be doing. And I know they're Paul Revere drivers, but driving MBTA buses. And when you call Paul Revere, they hang up on you, and it, the other day, it happened the other day. It's like they're not listening. And the other thing about the speeding factor of cars, is there any way you could put like a, a speed bump in a couple of sections of Herman Street up here? With, they're flying, even though there's a stop sign, they gas up and they're flying across and going down this way, even if there was two speed bumps like near the school here. It's an accident and a tragedy waiting to happen. It really is.
Thank you. And I, on the, as far as the bus schedule, I know we've contacted also, I know the first couple of weeks, especially on the weekends, and we thought it was more weekend drivers that they didn't know the schedule, but it has happened occasionally more than we would have.
I even suggested to put a sign on their, their dashboard, "Do not take Herman Street. It's Walden Street." They said, "That's a good idea." Well, you know, it is a good idea, but they're not listening.
And it's fine, and we will look into different, you know, there's a lot of issues with everything, right? Speed bumps, sometimes it's noise, the neighbors at night, they don't want to hear the noise of bumping over. When it's the wintertime with the plowing, there's a lot of issues with plowing.
Yeah, which is understandable.
But there are different options out there.
Yeah.
Take a look at. Especially with the school area.
Maybe a 25 mile an hour sign, because I see them like on Pleasant Street or whatever, you know, townwide, 25 mile or less, or less posted. There's nothing like that here except the blinking school light over here. But other than that, there is no 25 mile per hour sign, so.
Even, and I don't think we have them up here, because I know DPW did put them down near the basketball courts on Walden, the blinking signs for the walkways.
Yeah.
And those seem to really have an effect, too, when even something as simple as that could have an effect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom, Karen? Hi, Karen. Who's Karen?
Well, vacation.
It's the third time I've asked Karen. Anybody else in the council? Public relations, we have a few things. We still have, we do have movie night on the beach, August 22nd, 2023, at 8:00 PM, Disney's Miracle, the 1980 Olympic hockey team. On the 25th, we will have a flag raising for Michael Zioni Weekend in honor of this celebration with the movie, with the, with the movie night on the beach. So that will be on Friday, August 25th. We don't have a time yet, but we will make sure that that is advertised, what time that is. Also, to continue on the vein, Michael Zioni will be doing a book talk on his book, about his book, The Making of a Miracle, yeah. Jesus, it's only two hours. Let's start that again. Michael Zioni will be doing a book talk on his book, about his book, The Making of a Miracle, The Untold Story of the Captain of the 1980 Gold Medal Winning U.S. Olympic Hockey Team, on Tuesday, August 29th, from 6:30 to 8:00, at the Lyceum Room of the E.B. Newton Cultural Building. Books, both hardcover and paperback, will be available for sale by cash or check. There are also many committees that are in need of volunteers. Please contact the town clerk office if you are interested in any committees, and there will be a list, there is a list of different committees and the number of committee members needed. Counsel DiMarco, do you have anything you'd wish to add?
I don't have anything tonight.
Counsel.
Honan, nothing.
Counsel Honan. Counsel Fucillo.
Nothing.
Counsel Munson.
I do have an announcement to make. It's, I know it's a little bit far ahead in time, but it doesn't hurt. There will be a country night hosted at the CPYC, but it's for thebiged.org, and basically it's, it's, this is a cause that benefits those that have cancer and they're looking for some help to get through, whether it be, you know, tolls and parking or hotel stays or, basically, they just help whoever needs it, however they can. This is in honor of my, my lost friend, Eddie Hall. So that's on October 7th. You can look up more about it. It's a country night, there's line dancing, there's great food from Blackstrap, and it's October 7th, and you can go to biged.org if you want to know more about it.
Thank you. Counsel Belcher.
None.
Counsel Aiello.
Two quick things. One, just procedurally, any possibility, the next, the first meeting in September is the Tuesday after Labor Day weekend, which may be difficult for people to attend, et cetera, a whole bunch of things going on, so I don't know if anything can be done outside of the agenda for today. But second, and more importantly, I was saddened to read Counsel Honan's decision to not seek reelection. I've got to say, just personally, she's been an inspiration to me. She's got a backbone of steel, and she's got a wonderfully, wonderfully analytic mind, and I thank her for her leadership, and we're all going to miss you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. We will go back to your request after this.
Okay.
Counsel Flotkot.
Nothing.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yeah, so another movie, Friday, August 18th. It's Halloween in August. It's going to be Scooby Doo and the Witch's Ghost. It's at the back lawn of the E.B. Newton Building. There'll be free candy, popcorn, and drinks, and you can come dressed in your best costume for a chance to win a gift card. This has been hosted by the Winthrop Police, CASA, and the Winthrop Belks. That trio is really, it's, it's a great, you know, three organizations there that have done a lot this summer for a lot of the youth in this community. I was at the basketball tournament last Friday night, and it was a, it was, you know, I haven't been a teenage boy in Winthrop in quite some time, but it was a rambunctious group, and that was good. They brought a lot of energy, and a good thing the police were there to keep things, keep things in line. But this also sounds like a great event. I'm not sure I'll be at this one, but, you know, for anyone who's interested in Halloween in August, this Friday night.
Right. And going back to Counsel Aiello's point, he brought up a point about looking at the September meeting schedule.